Stated in the agenda, the first business is selection of a chairman and then selection of a vice chairman. The first question for y'all to consider is how do you want to vote? Various methods are set out in the notice of the meeting. You can do it by voice, by rising, by show of hands, or by ballot. In the past, we have usually done it by ballot, but it's your choice.
So move by ballot.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Hall, will you start at the top of the agenda and go ahead and have the invocation and pledge allegiance?
All right. Who's going to give the invocation?
Well, it's my time.
I guess you're going to do it.
You're it then, sir. We'll have the invocation.
Do I understand? And after the invocation, we'll have to pledge allegiance. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for the opportunities in life that you allow us to be part of. And I pray, Father, that as we meet together today as a board, that we may do so in the fear of the Lord. Father, I pray that you would invoke your blessings upon everything that's said and done here today, that your seal of approval would be upon it. We remember those, Father, who were on the battlefields today. I pray that you'd be with them. I pray that you'd be with their families. And, Father, I just pray that as we go into a new year as a board, that we will have foremost in our mind, first of all, to seek your guidance and do the right thing for the citizens of Lee County. That's why we're here. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
If y'all face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own. Motion having been made and adopted, proceed by ballots. For the benefit of the audience, this is not a secret ballot. Each member has to sign his name, or his or her name, to the ballot. They'll be deposited with the clerk, and they'll each show who each individual voted for. They'll be opened to public inspection in the clerk's office until the minutes of this meeting are approved and recorded.
This year's Stevens received four votes, Commissioner Lamond received three. Commissioner Stevens elected the vice chair.
Mr. Stevens, you have to take the ball and see whether the resolution gets... Is the resolution to set your meeting?
Yes, sir. Under item one, you handle all of that, A through D.
You have in your agenda a resolution which has followed the current, been followed in the past, designated regular meetings to be on the first and third Monday of each month. This is the meeting place.
I move to approve the resolutions as it stands, as the meetings that we have set now at the same time, is nine o'clock for the first meeting, three o'clock for the second meeting, and with the joint planning board hearings at seven o'clock on the third Monday of each month.
Right, the motion made by Commissioner Lamond, is there any comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Carried unanimously. All right, the resolution D for the annual examination of the fifth official bonds.
You have bonds. The statutory maximum for the sheriff is 25,000. And then the registered deeds bond is 1,000. And the tax administrator's bond is 100,000. Finance officer, 100,000. And new employees, you can handle over $100 or more at any one time is also under a bond. And the ones that have been observed in the past and are keeping with the statutory limits, you can set more if you feel it's necessary for the administrator or finance officer. We haven't had a claim for a bond in many years. I move to approve the bonds as they're set forth here.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Pascal to approve the bonds as set forth and signed by Mr. Hall. Any comments? Discussion? If there's none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. And let me say that I feel honored to be sitting in this chair, and I will do the very best that I possibly can as the chairman to move the business of the county forward. And I'm always open for comments from you and communications. My telephone number is in the book. All you have to do is call. And at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Stevens if she would change seats with Commissioner Hook.
Bob, I think you should clarify. In the phone book, there's probably three or four Bob Brown's.
Yeah, but there's only one at 400 Charlotte Avenue. That's it. But I'm aware of that because of the number of calls that I get that are not from me. The next item on our agenda will be the introduction of new employees. Mr. Snidham?
Mr. Brown, before we do that, can I call on our IT director to give you a few remarks about the new sound and video recording system we have?
Yes.
Ryan?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. As you probably have noticed, we have a new audio system installed in the board room. This is the first live meeting we've conducted with this, so please be patient with us while we fine tune the system for your speech patterns. One of the things I wanted to make note of is, in our course of recording the board meetings for the audio/video system in the back, as well as the courtroom, it's called the courtroom reporter, the clerk reporting system, we want to make sure that we have everything on file. So this is a small boardroom. Usually you can hear people talk if you're not speaking into a microphone. However, when you're playing back the recorded meeting, it's very tough to hear. So that's why the audio system was upgraded. The system that we had was failing. So we're so far very pleased with this system. The last piece that will be installed are some rubber bass, they're called shock mount mic stands, and that'll help prevent the paper shuffling sounds of vibration, the tapping of the desk being picked up. So again, if you could just bear with us on that. And one final note, if you can look just above me, back in the top center of the room, we've installed a light, it's a notification system, so when this light is on, you'll know that you are being recorded. Basically, anything that is being conducted in business in this room is recorded, but if you take a recess and there's still events going on in this room, you can take a quick peek up at the light and see if you're being recorded or not. Is there any other questions you have at this time?
How secure is that up there?
It's very secure.
Looks like you've got some weight.
It's unistrut support to the concrete ballast up top. Installer spent about six hours one night installing just those two speakers, so they're not going anywhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. I thought I noticed a difference, but I thought my hearing was improving. Now going on to the introduction of new employees. And before we introduce the new employees, I want to welcome two new board members to the board. Commissioner Jamie Kelly, Commissioner Linda Shook.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Proud to have you.
Thank you.
All right, new employees. DSs.
Chairman Brown, members of the Board of Commissioners, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Mrs. Billy Joe Stewart. Prior to coming to Lee County, Ms. Stewart worked for 10 years with Bartlett Nuclear Incorporated, one of the support contractors with Sharon Harris Nuclear Plant. She's actually not new to Lee County, because she's, since April, she's been working in a part-time temporary position over youth services. And we were lucky enough, she was, she wanted some full-time employment, so we just recently hired her into a position in adult services. While she was working at youth services, we noticed, you know, how organized she was and how dependable she was and how flexible she was. So we felt like, you know, bringing her into the Medicaid transportation position in social services would be a good fit, and it has proven to be so. She's, you know, she's, her expertise in computers and spreadsheets, you know, already coming out. It's no, it's not new to social services. We all know this particular position has to deal with some of the more demanding clients that we have. So don't let this, you know, real mild-mee, pleasant demeanor fool you. She's already proven to us that she can handle the necessities of the position. So, Ms. Stewart, our Board of Commissioners.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Glad to have you.
I think I'm shaking.
You're welcome. And I present to you a county pin that you can wire in your lapel to identify yourself as working for the best county in the state of North Carolina.
Good answer.
Congratulations.
Glad to have you aboard.
All right, do we have anyone here from the jail?
Chairman Brown, our...
Not in that meeting.
Our memo communication probably didn't make it through administrations. So we'll catch up with that new employee next month.
Mr. Haynes.
I'm Mike Haynes, Health Director in Lee County, and I wanted to say welcome and congratulations to our new commissioners. And it is with great pride that I would like to introduce you to Mr. Jonathan Godfrey. And Mr. Godfrey is filling a vacancy, one of our vacancies, in environmental health. And he is an intern, and he will be going to school and trained as an environmental health specialist for Lee County. And eventually will be doing on-site work and also maybe some food and lodging inspections too. We'd like to get folks duly authorized, but I would like to say he is, he's got to be an NC State fellow, I guess, because he went to state undergraduate and graduate school. He has a, he has an undergraduate degree in, in business, in business management and a master's in extension education. And he did go off, he went off to be a stockbroker for a while, but since his love is surf fishing and raising cows, and he likes to talk with people, he decided that he would come back home to Lee County. He is a native Lee County fellow. And so we're glad he's with us, and I think he has a lot of good future, and will add a lot to our department and the county.
Do you have anything to say, Jonathan?
Oh, y'all, not much. I want to refute one point, but I'm not...
Oh, me?
Two degrees from state, I'm a target.
I was, I was going to make the comment that you got on the Carolina blue shirt.
You too.
Right. Okay, Mr. God.
Okay.
Really needed to be filled.
Yes.
So where are that?
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Glad to have you. Go Tar Heel. Mr. Snidham, are you going to introduce the emergency management director?
Yes, sir. I got the nod from Mr. Cole that I would take that duty today. But I am proud to introduce Mr. Eric Griffin, who's started with us Friday. Eric comes to us from Orange County, where he worked for a very progressive department, where he's very highly regarded and lauded for his accomplishments. He has experience in everything that is peculiar about Lee County, and particularly the proximity to a nuclear plant. He has experience with those type operations. We feel extremely fortunate to have Eric, and we're extremely fortunate to have a very high-quality applicant pool. Eric was, stood out from his contemporaries on paper, in the interview, and most impressively on his references. So we are very fortunate to have him, look forward to Eric being with us a long time. This is Eric Griffin.
You have any comments, Eric?
Just happy to be here, and I look forward to working with everyone. And you've got a great county. I can't wait to, you know, move down here and get everything settled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's a whoop-out thing. Get the jacket.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Glad to have you. Good luck.
Glad to have you.
I believe that completes all of the new employee introductions, with the exception of Delvera Smith from the jail. She might be working. I mentioned the two new board members. Do you have a pin, Jamie?
I do not.
You got one.
No.
Do you have a pin?
No, I got your badge.
I'm official now.
Exile recognizes Mr. Joe Cherry for presentation of Employee of the Month.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Employee of the Month Selection Committee has selected Ms. Debbie Odom with the Lee County Finance Department as Employee of the Month for December 2006. Ms. Odom has worked for Lee County for nearly eight years. It is currently employed as a finance accounting specialist for. Ms. Odom's knowledge of her position is not only an asset to the finance office, but because the finance office works closely with each county department, she is an asset to the county as a whole. She is very conscious about the accuracy and quality of all work that is produced and exhibits a true commitment to Lee County. She was also an instrumental part in the automation of the tax refund process into accounts payable. She worked closely with the tax office through the transition of manually processing tax refunds to an automated process. Ms. Odom is always ready to answer any questions or to help find a solution to whatever the situation may be. Ms. Odom is eager to learn anything new and enjoys a challenge, as evident in her serving on several county committees, including CLU, Workforce Development, and the Website Design Committee. Ms. Odom is also responsible for managing the finance office area on the county website. The committee felt that based on the recommendation and Ms. Odom's attributes, she should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in awarding Ms. Debbie Odom Employee of the Month for December 2006.
Thank you very much. I would like to say that I appreciate the coworkers that I have that took time out of their workloads to nominate me for Employee of the Month. It's a good feeling to be appreciated and recognized by your peers. Thank you very much.
Okay, Debbie, will you jump forward, please? I'd like to first of all present you with the Star Award. You can use that for a paperweight or whatever, just don't throw it. Also, we have a framed certificate for you. Employee of the Month, December 2006, Lee County Government recognizes Debbie Odom for going above and beyond regular duties to be an outstanding employee.
Thank you very much.
You can have this right now, but it's not signed. I just happened to notice that, so I will have to sign it, and Mr. Snidham will be glad to do that. Also, we have some other rewards for you. You're going to have a free pass or a free certificate to the movie gallery, and also a gift certificate from Coca-Cola, and most importantly, a day off with pay. Also, a certificate to recognize you by Papa John's Pizza. And I'd be glad to give you that. Thank you. Again, congratulations.
Are you sure you did?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dale.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional agenda items that we need to pay attention to? Commissioner Reeves?
I just think it might be appropriate to include this request from the enrichment center to make our delegation aware of the legislative agenda for the senior Tar Heel citizens.
All right.
That's get, that'd be added to the consent agenda.
We'll wait. Do you stand again?
Yes.
All right, we'll do that. Got it. Word. Mr. Lamond.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Snidham.
We did pass out, Mr. Brown, a copy of a memo from the tax office, which will be part of item A under new business, and it's a general FYI-type piece about the appeals process for folks when they get their notices of new value. That's provided for information.
Do we need to take action on that?
No, sir. That is in support of the request to adopt the scheduled values.
All right. All those in favor of the agenda, as it was stated, say aye.
As is with the addition, with this.
Right, with the addition to the consent agenda. All that do not approve of the agenda, say no. Your motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any comments?
I've got one. This reevaluation appeals process, we're not approving that today, are we? This is the first time...
No, sir. That is the standard appellate process after the notices go out, to give folks an opportunity to dispute the...
This should be removed from the consent agenda and considered at such time we do the, the...
The schedule values.
Schedule values.
This is what it applies to.
All right, do you want to make that a part of item A under new business?
It should be. That's correct.
Okay, we'll do that. Does the motion still stand?
Motion still in.
To approve that. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The approval of the consent agenda is approved by unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on to new business, recognize Tim Kane and Lisa Faulkner in order to adopt the scheduled values. in an order adopting Schedule of Values.
First of all, congratulations on your elections and appointments today. We're here to ask for the approval of the Schedule of Values as amended. And upon the action, upon approval, it will be advertised for four consecutive weeks in the newspaper.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Kane?
The rookie here does. With all of the verbiage that was in here, for residential properties, what is the primary method of determining the value? Is it cost? Is it market value?
Sales compares, market value.
Market value?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
How did you arrive at that?
By looking at every sale that's occurred in the county since January 1st, '03.
So you looked back three years.
We looked at every sale from your last revow, essentially, all the way up.
Any other questions? Now, we've attached an item to the, this Item A. Mr. Reeves, what was your attachment?
Well, I didn't know it was mine. I called the manager and asked him if we had an appeals process in place that was clear. I think that when we get into adopting the Schedule of Values, there ought to be some process by which people clearly understand what their rights are and how to go about doing that. And it ought to be as simple, made as simple as possible. And my request to them was to prepare something and let me, at least me, take a look at it. Hope the board will consider that idea, that we shouldn't just throw this thing out to the public and have no way for them to know actually how to protect themselves in event they don't agree with what's being offered.
Well, are you satisfied with this document?
The first time I've seen it. When I turned it over a few minutes ago. So no, I can't be satisfied with the document, not having read it. What I wanted to ask, and I didn't attend the, I wasn't at the workshop. Tell me, what kind of timeline are we on? Are we trying to read something by January? What is the schedule here? Or who knows?
Well, I can speak to the notices. The notices won't go out until February. I think mid-February. Right, and we've yet to go out and actually have any kind of community meetings also. And a big component of that, as a matter of fact, we finish up with a way of, if you're by whatever reason unsatisfied, here's, here's what you do. Here are your rights as a taxpayer. So that is a part of every presentation that we give.
That's very important to me.
Oh, me too.
Yeah, but mostly for me, because I get elected, you don't. And, you know, my position is that there are going to be some folks who have reservations about saying anything publicly. So the document that I want to see is one that's very simplistic. So that clearly states, you take these steps, not complicated, something very simple. But the other side of the coin is, if we adopt this today, then you start your public meetings. Is that correct? Or are you expecting it to be adopted today?
Yes, sir.
That's the whole of it.
Page six. Six is statutory notice that we have to run in place for a once a week, four weeks.
Right, I saw that.
Telling anybody that objects to this Schedule of Values, they have a right to appeal to the Property Tax Commission.
Let me add to that, if I may. This concerns the Schedule of Values, certainly. What's important to Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer is their individual properties.
Correct.
And looking at it from a standpoint of privacy, everyone that attends or makes an appointment for the informal appeals will meet one-on-one. So everyone will have the ability to sit down with someone, you know, from my office or from the tax office and say, here are my concerns. And they'll be able to do that one-on-one without having to worry about doing it in, in public or worrying about, you know, any concern.
And I appreciate that, but let me tell you where I was coming from. Sometime when you have the public hearing, there'll be 20, 50 people sitting out there. Nobody will say anything. Then about time I get home to watch the ballgame, the phone starts ringing and they want to know, tell me what, what's going on and how do I go protect myself? So I'm simply saying, having that handout is what I'm very interested in seeing happen. And if I understood what Mr. Hall is saying, I read that, but are you going to hold those public hearings during that period of time? The four weeks are going to run.
I can answer that question, too. Typically, what we do is we're going to wait for this month, for these 28 days to pass by, because this is the Schedule of Values before we actually go out and start talking to people. Then we can talk.
How will you do that? That's what I'm trying to get to.
We'll actually contact civic organizations. It may be townships, it may be mayors, you know, of towns.
Will, will you hold, like at the courthouse or this location, a public hearing as such?
Yes, sir. We'll go anywhere and everywhere that we're invited to go.
In other words, they can be out in Northview, Deep River, Tranway, Northwest Pocket, or whatever?
Yes, sir. Typically, speaking from my office, we typically would do a dozen of those meetings. And we'll try to hit every corner of the county, just to make sure that everyone has the opportunity. But you're right, and I think one of the reasons, or one of the ways, one of the markers that we look at from a standpoint of how effective we are doing this process is the number of calls that you get at night.
Correct.
If we do an effective job going out there and communicating to the taxpayers, you're not going to get as many phone calls. What we want to do is educate and communicate to these citizens.
How detailed will the tax valuation statement that goes out be? Will it tell them square footage, what grade factor, all of those? Because to me, that would simplify things a lot, because they'd be able to look at that right away and say, I don't have that many square feet. Or, you know, because there are a lot of variables going into this that have not been used before. So education is going to be a big part of people understanding their tax statement. So I would hope that they're not going to get one that just says, your property's $150,000, you know, you have the right to appeal.
Well, I could speak to generalities and then Lisa and I will know about your specific notice. But typically, what we see is this is the value of your improvements. This is the value of your land, and this is the total value. One of the things they've got is a very effective tool on the web that you can actually look and see your entire property report card, along with the map of your property. So I don't know.
Yeah, on our notice is basically what he's saying, what, what most counties do. Because you're kind of limited into the amount of information that you can provide on a form. We've broken the form out in two parts. One part basically telling them, you know, their account number, parcel ID, address, number of acres, their assessed value, their land use value. If they, if they're farming it, we also are going to put that value on there. And then the other part will be, if they reach to appeal, information that, that we're asking from them, such as, you know, what is the square footage of your home? How many bedrooms, bathrooms do you have? Information that we can cross-check with what we have to make sure our information's correct. Also asking them, you know, ways that we could contact them, because we do want to talk to them. If they feel like the information is wrong, and we're also letting them know what our website is, so they can go to that website and verify the information that we have to see if it is correct or not.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
I got a question on the, the model comparison that I got. It was a B-grade model. And, and then looking at the, it looks like there's A and then A-plus and then a X. So it goes way above B. And I, I think, you know, we're setting a baseline at B. What, what is a B-grade house?
Actually, your baseline is a C. C is average. B is above average or good construction quality. What you have there, I believe, on the left is the model, and then on the right is an example. In other words, what are the factors involved for a B? Since it's higher than your model.
Is this manual on public display? And will it be in your, the ads that you run in the paper?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's located in the Tax Administrator's Office. There's also a copy in Broadway Library and the library here in Sanford.
Okay, so it will be open to the public?
Yes.
With respect to the, the handouts that we were given at the workshop after the last commissioners meeting, all these that are highlighted, is that something, is that something to be added on or, or what?
Actually, only the ones that have a note to the right. In other words, we highlighted every fifth one, so there's not many changes. For the most part, it was typos that were created.
So anything that has new, that's something you're looking to add?
Yes, sir.
To the, to be taxed?
Well, changing the way that we're coding it.
All right, with respect to that, what, what is the tax department looking to add on to start taxing? Because I've been getting a lot of phone calls, knowing the revow is going on. And people, the taxpayers have a lot of concern about that.
Let me speak to that. I think a lot of that concern comes from the standpoint of driveways, sidewalks, and fences. Those are not being taxed. There are, there are new, there are no new categories being taxed or picked up or anything in this revow. Everything that's being taxed this time has been taxed in the past. They did pick up fences, sidewalks, and driveways, where those were for informational purposes only.
Except for the commercial. And the commercial was picked up in the last revow, so that's a continuation.
Now, commercial, that would be something like a, a big plant or something like this. Securing whatever, say like if they have, just say it be a trucking company, to where they can secure the equipment they have outside.
But those were taxed in the '03 revaluation as well. So there are no new categories.
When did y'all make that decision? Because what I remember hearing from the beginning until now is that at some point in time, you all were going to look to see what those values were, what it added to it, and then ask us to make some kind of determination. So what, what made that change? Because it seems like to me you've talked across a little bit.
Well, I, I made the recommendation to the tax department that we not do that. We've been on the project six months, and I would say that we took a hard look at it to see if we could justify it. Could you extract it from the market in looking at the sales? And in my opinion, we could not find enough support that I felt good about to go out there and do that on a residential side. So I made the recommendation, I think, six weeks ago.
And some of us had already spoken against that, that practice in prior meetings. I had a concern about it.
You just asked where it was.
Any other questions?
Just, just one, Mr. Brown. Reference to, and I, and I saw it here somewhere where it's, you know, looking to, uh, change or change something so far as, or taxing something that is a fourth finish to half-finished to completion? Is that, is that the intent of the tax department? Or just let them get it finished, like if it's a house? To get it finished completely?
It's what is effective December 31st? So if your, if your property is, you know, half-done, we're going to tax on that half of completion as, and that will be the next year's bill.
And that's by law. That's in the machine record. We have to tax.
A lot of people don't understand.
The date is of January 1st of the year. That'd be the date the percentage would be determined of.
Similar to inventory.
Exactly.
Any further questions?
I've got one, just for more clarity for myself. I understand the public notice. Will you and the tax office be doing any education, educating during that period of time? Or do you have to wait until after the month that is running, the four weeks?
We've done it both ways.
Formally, I mean. The only reason I'm asking, that's a whole month that we could be covering some ground in the same format, with the same format that you're talking about doing afterwards, to try and get people more acclimated to what they're going to be dealing with. And if we can, if, I would support that. If we can't, then we can't. But I like to know.
Well, the way that we typically look at it, like I said, we've done it both ways in the past. But basically, when we go out for our revival meetings, which is what I call them, we're preaching from that text. And it's not really accepted until the 30-day period, or actually 28-day period is over with, giving someone the ability to petition, you know, the approval to the P, to the Property Tax Commission. And so typically, tax departments will say, let's wait until the approval period's done. The, you know, the, the standard 30-day waiting period is over. And then we can say, this is the official document, and we're going to go out and we're going to actually point to this official document. It's passed muster.
Are we making it an official document when we adopt it today?
Yes, sir. You're making it official, subject to the 30-day period.
Correct. So in effect, we are making it the official document if we adopt it today.
You're adopting it.
And then we just simply lose four weeks of the same kind of training that you're talking about.
We can go, I, I don't have any problem with going out and doing that now. I don't have any problem making those appointments starting today.
We do need to spend some time getting this information in our computer. There, you know, there's other things to do to understand what you're saying. And yes, we do need to get out there and educate the public. But at the same time, once this is adopted, or if this is adopted by the board today, then we need to get these cost tables built into our computers so we can start running checks and just checking behind ourselves to make sure that all this, you know, is coming together like it's supposed to.
Well, sir, I'm not trying to change the schedule. I'm just asking you, because I, if it, if it's complicated for the board, I would imagine there are some other people who are going to have some problems with it. You all work in it every day, so it's sort of simple in your minds, but it gets pretty complicated.
It, it can be. I guess what it comes down to, Lisa's absolutely correct. We've, we've put the cost tables in there already. The land property, the land tables are going in there starting today. It's what level of information do you want? I like to be able to give the best and most complete set of information that I possibly can. And so if we talk to a civic group tonight, which we, we could, you know, and use this, we're going to be speaking in generalities. In 30 days, 45 days from now, we can say, this is the effect on your neighborhood that we're, you know, that we're sitting in. We can talk about this particular neighborhood, and we can bring it home to you. But if we did it tonight, it would be very general.
But I'd be getting ready for it if you did it tonight. And then 45 days, I may have an entirely different set of concerns and questions for you. That's it for me. Yes, sir.
We have to approve it before January the 1st, or else it can't be used at all.
I understand.
Well, that was going to be my question. What happens if we don't approve it today? We're already in December, so you need this done as soon as possible.
We need it done, plus, like I, like I said earlier, I don't have any problem. Matter of fact, I would like, more meetings, the better. The more opportunities for communication and education, the better. And we can go ahead and we'll start, I'll sit down with Lisa this afternoon, and we'll talk about where we can go from here. But I think we need at least the adoption level we can do first.
All right, do I have a motion concerning this request? To, and it includes the resolution of the appeals process? You said to add it to it. We took it off to consent.
For discussion. Yes, sir. I did say for discussion.
Okay, do, do we want to make this part of the, of the request?
Not for my vote. It should not be. Yeah, it should not be.
Do we have to do it?
The only thing you need to do today to be adopt the resolution is before you about adopting this Schedule of Values and running the public notice, given the public notice that you have adopted.
Correct.
You have 30 days to appeal to the Property Tax Commission.
All right, now is that the motion?
That's it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Request, I would like to request a work session with the Board of Equalization Review and myself and any other commissioners who may be interested. Because I, I want to understand this so that I can explain it to the people in my district. I know in my subdivision, there have been five or six homes that have sold. I know in my subdivision, there have been five or six homes that have sold. I just want the comfort level of knowing that what they sold those homes for are going to be in the ballpark of what their values are. And I've got a widow on White Hill Road that I'm hoping her property comes down because hers was way too high. And so I just want the comfort level of knowing that some people in my district, you know, their, their new values under these formulas are going to be somewhat, you know, is what market value really is. Is that a possibility? And is anybody else interested in such a work session?
What's your subdivision?
Like Villanow.
Okay.
Did we do any comparables, I mean, in regards to like actual houses that had, okay, pick a house here, here, and here, and work up a, a new...
Oh, yeah, we did that at the work session. As we put more things into the system now, it's going to be a lot easier to generate more and more of those. And that's one of the nice tools that we use at the presentations that we give as well. So by the time that we get to an E and R work session, by the way, and I'm, I'm a fan and favor of that, we can say, you know, here are different areas. And what we try to do is we actually try to use the areas that we're meeting in and say, here is the effect of this revaluation. Here's what it is in houses that you recognize. So we, we're definitely going to do that.
I got the sense that Albert was a little frustrated that day when he left that meeting, you know? And I don't want them to be bombarded, you know? I, I think that we just need to understand this more, and I want the comfort level of knowing. And I had a, a heart attack there because my property value went up like two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And there was a little mistake in square footage. Hopefully, we got that squared away, but, you know, that has prompted me to be really nervous about all of this.
But that's the reason that we want to be as in the open and in the sunshine as we can possibly be. That was, her home was one of the homes picked in the work session, and we had, you know, a dozen houses that we looked at. And as we go, we're looking for things like that. We're looking for square footage issues, and we want to make sure that we're as accurate as possible. The only way to do that is to gather and provide as much information as possible.
Well, I'll say this, getting around the county and going to an enormous amount of meetings, I've just heard a lot of people say they don't want to be penalized for doing good and trying to make a better quality of life for them and their community. And I have a lot of concern about this, and, as well as Ms. Shook. And I'd just like you to keep that in mind.
We're going to do that.
Do you feel that this is a equitable system for everybody, and you think it's going to be fair for all of the county?
I do. And that's the only way that it works.
Mr. Smithman's house was one of those houses also. Were you satisfied with your?
I would like mine to be a little higher.
Take some off mine and put on his.
Are you trying to sell it? I want to do my, I want to do my part. I want to make sure I'm doing my part.
Take some off mine and put on his. Let the record reflect that, every bit of it.
What percentage yours go up? I know it didn't go down.
Well, it's not, it's really not a good indicator because we put money into our house. It was a substandard dwelling probably before because it's being remodeled. So it probably knows that it is not a good indicator of the market.
Take it out with the board.
I'll take it out with the board. But for instance...
What percentage?
It went up to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I said, if I could sell it for that, I'll pay three different commissioner, or three different commissions on that property.
But you didn't have a...
To move this along, Mr. Smithman, would you confer with the Board of Equalization and Review and see what their interest is in meeting with, with us for a workshop?
Yes, sir. One thing that we are planning on doing that we hope to do before Christmas was to have the Department of Revenue come down and assist our tax department in a training-type work session, specifically for the Board of E and R, but certainly with your input and would like your participation. So that will be scheduled, Ms. Shook and Mr. Kelly, we've been talking about that for a while. I would offer though, if anyone, Ms. Shook or any other, would like to have some specific time set aside to go through some issues, we can do that. We can call and arrange with the tax department, set aside an hour or two and go through those issues. Or at first, hear what you want, what you want to get out of it, and maybe we can go away and do some work and bring you back in and show you the product. Lisa was mentioning that we must input that document into the computer before we can start just throwing out values. So there is work, administrative work to be done, but we can certainly, on a case-by-case basis, assist you with the education you need in any specific area or any specific request.
So if I give you a list of twenty-five property addresses in my district, somehow that we could figure out what the value would be under the new formulas?
We certainly can do that. It will be a lot easier in a couple of weeks when the tables are in the computer, but we can do that now, yes.
And compare that with some properties that are on the market, you know, that have been on the market for a while.
We can make, we should be able to help you make any comparison.
In their previous year comparison, percentage it rose.
I think they could pick any point from two thousand and three forward and make a comparison.
That could be is, is raw land as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So to do that, if you would, on a case-by-case basis, either through me or through Ms. Faulkner, set an appointment, we can do that on an individualized basis.
Just let us know when they come down for the E and R board.
Yeah, you would be in.
You know, one would think, hearing the comments from this board alone, that people responsible for making this decision, the concern that we have here ought to tell you that I can imagine what the public must be feeling. And losing any ground any time before we try and get better information out is critical. And I'm not pressing the tax department, I'm simply saying, we ought not lose that time.
I agree with you.
Well, I think all of us as commissioners have received comments and telephone calls and concerns from the citizens out there concerning the revaluation. And so it is, it is a hot issue, and it may get hotter, but we don't want it to get... That's right. I think this board can be your best sounding board. And that's what we're talking about.
Exactly. Well, I, I think a meeting would be a great idea, and as Mr. Smithman pointed out, not only do we have it broken down by year, but we've got it broken down by property type. We've got it broken down by zoning classification, by age of structure. I mean, we've tried to look at everything just to make sure that we are as equitable as possible. I, I don't want, you know, my grandmother to pay any more taxes than she absolutely has to. And the only way that works is if this is equitably done.
All right, Mr. Smithman, I'll just leave that to you, and you keep us informed and see what you can work out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in the meantime, any individual commissioner who needs any information or the route to go to get the information, call Mr. Smithman or either go to Lisa. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Y'all done a good job. Next item on the agenda is the request from Robert E. Lee Society to place a monument at the Lee County Courthouse. We have Mr. Bill Johnson and David Spidey, president.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. About seven years ago, we came before you and made our proposal to put the memorial for Robert E. Lee, the county's namesake, at the courthouse in the plaza. That was approved unanimously. Motion was made by Commissioner Reeves. And we just deemed it prudent to revisit the issue because in the spring of two thousand and seven, we are intending to dedicate the monument to Lee County. We're here to see if you have any questions.
I'd move to approve the request as presented and reconfirm the proposal of the Robert E. Lee Society and Robert E. Lee at the courthouse in the, in the, in the more site that has been presented.
I second.
And it's in the plaza area between the two courthouses. And I, I think it'll break up that open space that we have there. And if you go from one building to the other, you're going to have to look at it because it's going to be that.
Yeah. There has been one minor change that we did for several reasons, mostly public safety. The original proposal had a large granite to put the bronze in. Well, we ran into a problem with that. The granite would be over six tons, which meant that we would have to bring in cranes, which was very intrusive to the courtyard, and we didn't want that. The other cost was the granite would cost over fifty thousand dollars and was not guaranteed. So we're going to use Lee County, Lee County manufactured brick instead of the stone. That's the only change.
All right, the motion is on, on the floor from Mr. Lamond to approve the request. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Spidey. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
We need to consider additional meeting dates for December. Normally, in the past, we've only had one in December.
What would you approve?
Would approve what?
This one? This one? That's what.
Okay, but today is it, huh?
As far as I'm concerned.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. So ordered. Our next meeting date will be January the 1st.
That also needs to be reconsidered.
Are we still on the verge of a move?
We're recommending January eighth and twenty-second, Mr. Brown, because the two new members and myself will be attending the New Commissioner's School on the third, fourth, and fifth.
Okay, the eighth and the twenty-second. We'll probably have some public hearings for that twenty-second. Do you know when we have anything back there for long? All right. Voting delegate for January the two thousand and seven Legislative Goals Conference, Mr. Smithman.
Mr. Brown, your annual Association Legislative Goals Conference is coming up in January, and the board's required to appoint one person to represent the board on establishing those goals, those legislative priorities for the association. And this happens every two years. Ms. Stevens is the co-chair of that process and committee this year, and will be chairing the meeting. We need to, every county has someone sitting out there to actually vote on every goal. And this will be the legislative agenda for the one hundred counties for the next two years. So we need someone that's been involved with that process, that understands, I guess, the issues involved. And it can't be Ms. Stevens because she'll be chairing the meeting. So you'll need to appoint one person to represent you at that.
This is January the eleventh through the twelfth at Pinehurst.
Twelfth, that's correct.
Okay. Your recommendation for appointment as a delegate to this meeting conference? I'll volunteer, Mr. Chairman. I don't have no problem with it. Well, I plan on going, but I'd rather somebody else be the voting delegate.
I want to accept Commissioner Lamond's proclamation.
All right. Mr. Lamond, it's been nominated to be appointed and given the right to cast the vote for our county. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. So ordered.
This is a bit quick, but let me ask this one quick question regarding the legislative agenda. Each year, there's a lot of discussion about counties getting relief from Medicaid. Is anyone here prepared to tell me what to expect if they do give us that relief?
Mr. Smithman, do you know more about that?
You know, sometimes it's better the devil you know than devil you don't know. So tell me what it is we get out of the deal that we happen to get, what we keep bargaining for. Anybody?
It sounds like maybe we'll have more responsibility for mental health expenses from some of this.
You're going to have that anyway.
There's a lot of conversation.
They're making that clear. There's an audit going on right now. They're going to make that very clear to you.
Mental health is definitely on the table. We keep hearing conversations about us getting in the road business. There was a legislative oversight committee that met last week that is, and it was covered in the Raleigh paper, I think, recently. But anyway, that is specifically looking at the funding of state and local government and that relationship. I believe Ms. Stevens' committee is talking about a lot of these issues. The Medicaid conversation is still the tax swamp where they take away one of our pennies and give us the authority to raise a penny, which is basically a half-billion-dollar windfall for the state of North Carolina. And you guys get the burden of deciding whether to replace that lost revenue source or not. That conversation's still alive. Do you have anything to add?
Other than that, this committee that's just been established, which has quite a significant number of influential senators and representatives, and maybe six or eight commissioners around the state, they are already looking at lengthening this, the term on their session because they're thinking it's going to go on through this long session and possibly recommendations coming from, for the next short session. But they're saying if anything emerges, that they thought that they can implement to let's go ahead and move on that. But I think clearly the feeling is that they want to get the Medicaid thing settled once and for all. So they, again, I attended that meeting because I was just curious to see what they would say. And really, what they're asking for, you know, if you've got any great ideas that you think counties can attach themselves to and that the state can as well, you know, to have at it. So they're looking for suggestions.
For the benefit of our new commissioners, we took up this issue and voted against the sales tax swap as a policy here last year. And what we advocated, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, is the choice of revenue options to supplant the loss if they do indeed take away a full penny of our sales tax revenue. We would like to choose from either a sale, a partial sales tax, or land transfer tax, or impact tax, or one of different ways. The point is, we believe, our board stated, that one solution should not be good for all hundred of us. We should have the choice of how we recoup the loss if indeed they take away our sales tax. And that was the policy that we adopted as a board, and we reaffirmed six weeks ago, I guess.
Well, early on last year, of course, the Medicaid issue has been on the front burner for a long time. But if you recall, Mr. Smithman, Ms. Stevens, one of the influential senators told us that he was going to appoint a committee or a commission to study the issue and then bring it before the legislature. I have not heard that he's appointed that committee.
Our understanding is that it's not. My last conversation with the association was that it would not be appointed.
And his, his premise at that time, way back, was take away the penny.
Right.
You're going to have to trade, it's not...
Because they want to look at the whole, the whole picture.
I think the trade is obvious, but the concern I have is when it happens, there are going to be some people who fall off of the, off of, off of the Medicaid table, and then counties are going to be expected to take care of them some kind of way. So it's more than just making that trade. It's making the trade and knowing full well what you're going to be responsible for after the trade is made. All I'm asking the committee to do is be mindful that not every opportunity to trade with the legislature is a good idea.
Right.
Well, we did, we did not agree with him or disagreed at that particular time.
Didn't say anything, I just wanted to make my point.
It is a trade. Ms. Shook referenced mental health, and that is true. They are looking at, I was in a meeting with Carmen Hooker Odom a month ago, and she started bringing up the capacity of the counties to help out and the capacity of the local management entities to do more with less. It is definitely an aim of them to push more cost for mental health down on the locals. The street and roads conversation is scary. Apparently, that is real, that they are looking at ways of getting out of the road maintenance business and putting it back in the county's laps, which we haven't had since the thirties. They're putting everything back on the table. This is small conversation, but there is conversation. Senator Reeves is right. Whatever they take away, we better be mindful of what they give back.
This coming legislative session next year is going to be one that we're going to have to stay on top of. And I really mean that. First of all, they're going to have a budget shortfall from the get-go. And I think they already understand that. Who's going to make up the difference? We're going to make it up. They're going to be passing stuff to us.
Well, I think we have, you know, we've been back and forth to Raleigh. I don't know how many times last year. I know Ms. Stevens and myself and, and Mr. Smithman and, and Bob's been up there along with the school board. And I think we have really pushed, you know, the things that we look for. And I have... And I have no problem of going back up there as many times as it takes.
Amy, what's the deadline for getting our list of, and we can submit federal items as well as state legislative relief items, right?
They're really looking for state.
State?
We've already submitted that.
So who has a strong voice with the federal government on the things that impact us heavily?
I, you know, I guess this is one of those things that we carry when we go to the NACO conference in March, and when we have an audience with them there. That's when we really get a chance to say things about that there.
In Washington. We have made some progress by attending those conferences. Mr. Lamond, he was able to really get in, to get funding that they were thinking about cutting off.
We actually had a federal lobbyist for a very short period, four, five, six months. And what this board decided to do was actually take it on ourselves. And that's when we started our own internal legislative liaison committee, which was Mr. Brown, Ms. Stevens, myself, and Ms. Price. And we have been working the federal issues internally. This, the Association of County Commissioners is certainly in touch with the federal issues, but I can't say that it is a top-five priority of what we do as a collective county group. So we have taken that on ourselves, and Mr. Brown is right. We have had some success in a very short term working with our representative and two senators on a more one-to-one basis. So we will continue that, because it has borne fruit.
All right. No other discussion on that matter. Move on to the next item, and I recognize Commissioner Reeves for discussion reference school construction funding method.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that I wanted to at least stake myself out and let the board members know that the previous board has paid a very, very big debt in the area of schools. We've got about $50 million on the table that we've done through COPS process. And I'm of the opinion, and my vote would be that any building in the future will be decided by the public. And I just thought I'd put my position out there. Early on, it's certainly open for discussion, depending on the emergency or need. But right now, with the debt we've incurred already, I'm for the public deciding when and what we build next. And that was it.
All right, you wanna handle that on a case-by-case basis, or do you wanna make that a function? That be our practice in the future?
Well, I would certainly move that to be our practice. I think everything is gonna be decided one time or another on a case-by-case basis, because things change. But it ought to be the position of this board that right now, the public needs to decide when we do any more building. And that's my move, motion.
All right, you have a motion on the floor. Do you hear any comments?
Well, I concur with that. I know in the past, we have dealt a lot with the shortage of classrooms, the schools, and everything like this, the people moving into the county, the rapid building that's going on. That was, to me, was an emergency-type situation to work with the school board. And now that we have this in place, I don't see where we have to have to do another COPS bond. And I concur with Mr. Reeves that anything else needs to be done by a referendum.
I agree with it also. And the reason we got called up using COPS this time is, was the time factor. We were running out of time, and so we had to do something, and we didn't have time to do a bond issue.
We had a situation for years where the school board couldn't decide what needed to be done first. They recognized the need, they just couldn't pick the project. So I'm in full concurrence.
Any other comments? Do you understand the motion?
I always think it's a binding motion. I always think it's better when the public is involved in any kind of big undertaking.
Now, you talk about new construction, right?
It appears that renovation's gonna be just as expensive, so I'm talking about everything.
Okay. That, I wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
Because we do have some issues on, especially over at Lee Senior.
Correct.
Does this include the community college?
Yeah. Include the community college and any structure.
Community college is a different subject altogether, in my opinion. I'm just talking about the public schools right now, the board of education.
Well, I'd like to ask the question. When we did that little matrix of where the projects fell in the different years, and we adopted that, where is the high school? I can't remember. Where are the high school renovations? Is that like in two more years?
Certainly in two more years. I'm gonna say 2008.
So the school board needs to be put on notice, so they won't have to sell.
Actually, I made myself a note that we need to start adopting a project schedule.
Right.
So that we don't get caught like we did on this one, where we missed the window to advertise for a referendum. So in our CIP work, Ms. Minner, we will need to develop project timelines and show the period of time where we must move forward with a referendum or not.
Right.
So that would be something new in this year's setting.
Well, and given the school board heads up, they don't know, they've just gotta start selling it. That's what they want, and they gotta work. But I agree.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered. I think it's a good move. Commissioner Reeves, you have the next item also. Discussion reference Christmas cards for active duty of Lee County National Guard Service.
Well, I wanted to ask the board members to join me if they would, and finding out which guardmen we still have over in Iraq. I thought they would be coming home by now, but obviously, that's not going to happen. I thought that if the board felt like it, whether it's public money or our own private money, if you cared to join in, we should send them cards, get a list of their names and addresses, and send them cards. Any update and information that the manager can about what's going on in the county. I just thought that would be appropriate. And that it ought to be a continuing practice by this board for our armed service.
How do you want, Mr. Smidman, man or lad, do you want the clerk?
Whatever is appropriate, I would.
Probably take my boss.
Yeah. Okay, he said it would take both of them. I would move it, they both handle.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered. We move on to item G, discussion reference prorating longevity pay. Commissioner Lamond.
I was looking over this, and especially on 3.4, so far as employee must be employed with the county of Lee on the payment date of the check. One thing that I have looked at and thought about a lot, if somebody is, has a heart attack or stroke out here working for the county, and they're out for a specific amount of time, you know, who knows how long it could be? I know they go on the workers' comp or whatever. But if, for instance, they cannot come back to work, and they have a doctor's written notice saying that they cannot perform their duties, I think it would be good for them to know that they would be receiving their longevity pay but at a prorated rate. This is something, and especially for those that's 15 years or more.
Well, it'd be pretty much the same as we did with the sheriff, right?
Yeah.
We program it is.
Yeah. Because none of us, none of us know if something like that would happen to anybody, and knowing all well that the number of employees that we have, which number's over 300, I believe it is, that's not saying that the ones we have here today are going to have or experience anything like that. But this is just, to me, a safety net.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, where does, are you just talking about people who are on permanent disability? Is that correct?
No, no, I ain't not talking about permanent disability.
Okay, what were you referring to?
What I'm referring to, if somebody is out here throughout the county working, and they have a sudden, a sudden heart attack, or have a stroke out here working, and you could take any department, whether it be, you know, with here, in the building, or especially outside. That's, you know, that's the things that I'm looking at.
So what are you calling them, though? Are you calling them out on sick leave? Or, I'm not getting the distinction of what they, what you would call them.
They're actually out, just like I was. Just take my case, for instance. I got hurt on the job working for the county.
So they're out on disability?
I was out on workers' comp.
On workers' comp. So are workers' comp employees not regular employees in any way, shape, or form?
They are regular employees, yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, one second. Are we talking longevity or... Is this longevity?
Longevity pay.
Isn't that a different, or is it?
Well, anyone on workers' comp is continued in service. They would get their longevity payment, whether you're on workers' comp, or on sick leave, or on vacation, you're still an employee, so you would get still a longevity.
I think what Mr. Lamond is concerned about is that the year that they have to retire or go on disability or whatever, they don't reach their...
They will not reach that peak, or they will not reach that date anniversary.
Anniversary day.
How can they not if they're still qualified as a regular employee? I'm not getting that.
If they're still on the payroll, they would get the longevity. If they settle their workers' comp claim 10 days before the anniversary date, they would, which means they end employment, they would not. But our workers' comp insurance, if I was somebody, I would be negotiating that with the workers' comp insurance, saying, "Look, I'm missing this too." That's why we have insurance.
Right.
I believe if this 3.3 entry would be changed, then it would have to be written up and brought back to us, because we approved the manual as it was. May that be rewritten?
How does this measure up to what was done for the sheriff's situation? I thought that we were gonna try and look at a policy that would take care of all employees as it relates to longevity. Is this what this is addressing, or do you know?
I'm not sure. I think what was done for the sheriff was prorating. He ended, how?
He ended December 3rd.
Let the staff tell us how.
How far was he from his anniversary date?
About three days.
So he was prorated for 362 days worth of the longevity pay.
Okay.
Because he came up short.
Was that a...
And it was beyond his control.
Yeah, he had no control over that.
Is that for everybody?
No, that was for the sheriff, because it was an elected office.
Okay. And how about, well, I guess that's a good... How about the people that work with him during that period? In a sense, they're elected too if they don't get rehired.
Yes, sir. Some of those people did not reapply for jobs with the new sheriff.
Okay.
And some of them retired. May I question?
Sure.
Some of those people did not reapply for employment, and some of those retired. So if we would go back and give longevity to those people, then we have people that have retired or left the county since July 1st. And that would, including the sheriff, that would cost us about $14,000 if we went back to July 1st.
Well, the cost is always important, but fairness to all employees is equally important. And I'm simply trying to understand what we're doing and how we do it, is all I'm listening for. If... That's law enforcement. If they were non-law enforcement, so what happens to those individuals who retire before their anniversary dates?
They do not receive unless they wait to the payday, which is the 25th of the month.
So is our payday this that triggers it? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's when the check is paid, on the payday.
The payday of the anniversary of their employee.
Yes, ma'am. If they were hired September 10th, then they have to work to the 25th to receive the longevity check, because it's paid that date.
And the purpose of longevity pay is?
To reward tenure.
To you, okay.
And the old policy stated that any time you left the county, you got a prorated amount, which is not really rewarding the tenure. The tenure is for you to stay until it's time for you to get that amount.
And have you done any comparisons of that?
Yes, ma'am. I did a survey Friday after I talked to Commissioner Lamond, and I sent out on the list serve, asked for counties how they handle longevity. And Mr. Lamond had mentioned to me the disability factor. Can I approach the board and give you a handout?
Sure.
Are you saying just since July, that amount equates to 14,000? Wow. And what do we spend on longevity pay in the course of a year's time?
Okay. This past year, the budget amount for longevity was $290,000 for this budget year. If you look at the printout, I just asked for municipalities and counties that have longevity. If they did the prorated amount option, if they had a disability clause in their longevity, and when was it paid to the employee? And if you'll look on the survey, there's 22 entities. 17 of those people pay out longevity at one time. They don't pay out by anniversary month or whatever. It's paid at one time. And five of those entities had a disability clause in their payout that showed that if they had a 30-year retiree, that they got theirs at any time, but it was prorated. But if you look at disability, we had five counties that, or entities that said they would pay disability.
What does that mean? What are the disability clauses?
Disability would be if they were qualified by local government retirement system as disabled.
And they give them credit for completing that year tenure?
Yes.
It seems like we've got another issue here in that we've got the people that were at the sheriff's department that were either not, that retired, or, you know, were let go.
Right.
And they might have worked there for 15 or 20 years, and they have, you know, I guess they're probably expecting, you know, longevity pay for, to pay for Christmas or something. You know, I think that it's only fair that we consider them in this situation.
They didn't have any choice about leaving.
Our longevity.
Our longevity, throughout the year, not in December. It's only paid on the anniversary date. Like, if your anniversary date was August, then you would get it in August.
Unless you do it like you stated.
We pay it once a year, yes, sir. Like, if you paid it out in November...
But didn't you prorate it for the sheriff?
The sheriff was a special case, Commissioner Kelly. He was an elected official. He had no control that he, you know, that he, he had no control. He had to go out by December 3rd.
I think you have some other people that are in that same situation, don't you? Maybe with the sheriff's department?
Actually, it was a special case, because this board chose to make it a special case.
That's right. That's right. It's been allowed seven days.
It was, yeah, it was not in the policy that way. So it was a one-time... So, it was a one-time... So, if Mr. Carter were to leave before his tenure, before his anniversary date, it would take a vote of this board to grant the same thing to Mr. Carter. So, it was not an adopted policy. It was an action for Mr. Bryant.
But I think, I think we pretty much agreed at that time that we will handle it on a case-by-case basis. Have we had any requests or questions from individuals who were not rehired concerning the payment of longevity?
No. They ask about longevity. They were told what our current policy is.
How many people?
Um, how many people have asked? We only have one lady that had mentioned her longevity pay. To me. And most of those that left had already gotten longevity. I mean, if you go back and you prorate, then you got to go back. They've already gotten it. Some of them got it in September. So, if you prorate, you got to go back and pay some of these people three or four hundred dollars just from September to now.
Now, I think it's unfortunate, too, but I think this is one of the things that happens when you decide to make an exception. It always ends up stepping on someone else's toes. And I remember a woman from the Health Department who sent a letter to me. I imagine she sent one to all the commissioners. And, you know, I felt bad for her, but, you know, this is what our policy stated. And, you know, to pick and choose, well, you know, this is a case I'm going to fight. It just wasn't one that, um, I went and spoke to the manager about it, and I think he had had a conversation with you, and you'd had one with her. But, um, you know, I think the message to her was that she wasn't going to get it. So, you know, now here we are, we're facing it again. And I think it is one of the problems with ever opening a gate. So, um, you know, this decision will be once and for all. Either we're going to go back to prorating it on every month, or we're going to do what the purpose is. What it sounds like to me, the purpose of the longevity pay is it's an incentive for people to stay employed.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if that's the purpose of it, then I would like for us to maintain our new...
I agree with you only in this, just the sheriff's department people just sort of are, I guess, an exception because they didn't have control.
And this person with the Health Department, her argument, if I can remember correctly in reading her letter and understanding it, so I may have it wrong, it was that she didn't know about the changes of the ordinances, or whatever you would call this, personnel policy. So, she said, you know, "If I had known about it, I would have stayed until a certain date." So, you know what I mean? You, you're always going to find these exceptions where it's like it doesn't fit any criteria. And so, either you adopt a policy and you keep it, or you just change it back to something that is going to be, um, vanilla.
I, I think the lady that you're talking about, she retired shortly after we adopted the new policy.
Right, was she, because she, yeah.
Um, that was the problem.
I think in that window of time is when we adopted it. She didn't know she'd already given her date, is the way I understood it.
Yes, ma'am.
So...
Well, if, if, if we don't change the, the, this three point three item here, then I guess the best, the best way we can handle it is that the employee would petition the board to make an exception for them. On a case-by-case basis, if that's what we're going to do.
We should make that a permanent part of our agenda.
I don't, yeah. That's right. It will be like a tax.
One thing, I'm not recommending that we do that, but that's what you're going to have to do.
One thing that staff would like to recommend, and Mr. Kelly referenced this, and we espouse this philosophy, is we would like to pay longevity one time a year, like the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Christmas.
Exactly. Which, if you'll notice in Joyce's survey, I see that four fifths at least of those surveys say they only pay once, and most of them are December or November. I know that my previous community paid like that. But that would be a new policy. You know, if, that's something the board would like to consider. Staff certainly espouses that philosophy. And we've been doing it this way for a long time, so, you know, change is change. Be a lot easier for us, and it also is a benefit to the employee because they get this chunk of cash right before Christmas, which sure does help out around the holidays.
So, I'm just out of curiosity, if you made that change, which sounds like a great one, what about those people that worked one year and eleven months?
There will be some people that will feel it's unfair because they have to wait an extra eight months to get their pay. You're right, there's always going to be problems.
So, then do you prorate theirs for that first initial time?
We would say no, because you, you always catch up in the cycle. The cycle always catches up, just like we're getting ready to change our payroll processing date, and people are going to swear that we're cheating them out of money. But we can show you on paper that everybody eventually catches up. It catches up. No one's being short-changed.
Well, they're not el, an employee's not eligible for longevity until they've been here for five years.
Five years.
They actually give them a six-year, or the fifth, fifth anniversary.
On the fifth anniversary.
Right, okay.
And are we looking at longevity as just for the current year, or longevity in their term of service?
It's based on years of service. It's a percentage based on years of service.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I'm talking about just in the way we're thinking about it right now.
Right, right, right.
Not, not on paper.
Right.
The way we're thinking about the proration we're talking to the sheriff.
The one you mentioned, are you talking about there in the office of the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Secretary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only one you've had so far?
Yes, sir, because that's mentioned in their longevity, to me.
Mr. Chairman, you're talking about doing a, a case-by-case? And, and I think, I think I spoke to her or something other before the election, and she was going to work on it to January, I mean, excuse me, December the 3rd.
She was, and she decided to retire on the 30th because of the, for her retirement purposes, because you have to retire at the end of the month. You can't retire into the month. You have to be at the end of the month. Retirement takes place the first day of the month. So, December 1st would have been her retirement date.
Is that a state rule, or?
Yes, sir. That's a rule that you retire, retirement begins the first of the month. So, if she had not, she would have been a whole month there without anything, yes, sir. It would have been in January, she would have had to retire.
And, and really, that was no choice of her. I mean, she'd still be working if she...
Yes, sir. She would have still been on her payroll first of December and...
How many, how many years did she have?
Twenty-one years, fifteen days.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, something like that.
Twenty-two.
You're saying it was a choice for her?
She retired, yes, ma'am.
All right. Motion been made that we look at it on case-by-case and take a closer look at the policy for study.
Would you like for us to come back with a recommendation on this policy? You know, one thing I, I see City Sanford does, they prorate for retirees. I get that. You know, the point is they have been tenured, that's why they're retiring from you. So, that may be something we want to look at.
That's what I couldn't understand. If a person's retiring, I don't understand why we're not doing that.
And we could put a formula in here that says if you meet retirement as defined by, whether it's our health retirement system, or our local government employees retirement system, if you meet the definition of retiring, I, I understand that. I see the benefit and the validity of prorating for retiring. I just, I just...
There are two situations that obviously are special cases. One would be retirement. The other would be, as Commissioner Kelly said, where it's law enforcement's concern. We all know how that goes regardless of what we might think. We know how it goes. So, those are exceptions to the situation. Otherwise, we ought to look at our policy and let the staff come back and make a recommendation as to how we should go.
Do you think?
Is that your motion?
It is.
What was the motion?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Motion was to consider, what is, what is the, the, uh...
Longevity?
Yeah, the longevity for the...
End of age.
The lady that you, that retired on November the 30th. And from there, for staff to come back with a recommendation, with the exception of law enforcement and retirement, or you can include that as long as they're special cases in my mind.
Right.
If you follow me. You want more clarity?
I do. I'm sorry.
You have situations where people retire. Those are special conditions.
Can we make these separate motions? I guess is where I want to like...
I'm fine. All right. The, the, the lady retiring November the 30th, I would move that her longevity be prorated.
All right. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, your other motion.
For future longevity cases, I would ask that retirement and law enforcement be treated on a case-by-case basis. And that staff address all other areas of longevity as relates to Lee County employees and come forward with a recommendation. Are you going to break, break that up, too? I'm just asking. I don't mind.
Are you talking about going all the way back to July?
No, he's saying, I'm thinking that what we'll have to do is you have to come back. If we approve this recommendation or motion of yours, then we have to come back, and then we have to have law enforcement, you know, that issue before this board. Is that true? Or are you going ahead and saying with your motion that you want us to accept their predicament and make allowances for that?
Treat those as case-by-case situations.
Case-by-case meaning that you're approving them?
Considering them. Everything is for consideration. Retirement and the law enforcement, those are two particular areas that I think we ought to address separately. Is all I'm saying. Have we already done the November 30th? Ms. Freeman? I thought we were going to vote on that. We voted on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we did. We proved that.
I'm trying to help Commissioner Stevens get an understanding.
And I'd like to table this whole issue until staff comes back with recommendations because I just feel like we've got too many things out there on the table all of a sudden that, you know, we may not be realizing, and I'm sorry, I'm one of them, what it would be that I was voting on. I am very interested in hearing the recommendations from the staff and laying it out so that we can see it and have time to think about the ramifications because one of the things I think happens when you just off the cuff, without looking at it and reviewing it, is you open another Pandora's box. So, that would be, I'm not going to motion.
But I, before you go through with your motion, I believe that's what Mr. Reeves is saying.
That is all that I'm saying, is that they be given consideration, but giving the staff direction on which way to go. I think they have to look at retirement. I think you look at law enforcement situations and come back with any other recommendation they feel worthy of recommending to the board.
And what you're saying by tabling the motion is that you give them a chance to do that and then bring it back to us.
Right.
David, can you also find out if your, if your employees are open to the November or the Thanksgiving pay instead, you know, a single time? So, y'all's, y'all become a lot more efficient in what you're doing.
It's definitely...
Do you leave your motion to table on?
Yes.
All right. Now, to table all in favor, table in motion, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Six to one to table. And do y'all understand what you need to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then you're better staff than I thought.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
We tabled it, but we still going to get your motion carried out.
Motion to the first.
All right. We have some appointments that we need to pay attention to, pages eighty-eight to ninety-two, appointments to the juvenile crime prevention council. Do we have any, uh... Ms. Shawanda Cherry has been nominated or is being recommended for fulfilling of a board vacancy on the juvenile crime prevention council. And also a recommendation that Mrs. Allison Delaney Briggs be appointed to the juvenile board.
I'd move to approve both Ms. Cherry and Ms. Briggs to the, to that board. Mr. Chairman?
That juvenile crime prevention council. Motion been made that these two be approved, although in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. So ordered. Appointment to the Mid-Carolina workforce, page ninety-three, ninety-five. Looked like we have three vacancies to that board and no, no recommendations. Is that correct? No one's flagged. We need one for organized labor. Didn't we talk about this before?
We just did, and I've worked on it, I don't know how long, between the city fire department and with the postal service. They are the only two organizations that are recognized organized labor. And I know Ms. Eberman is, is one of the supervisors there and apparently had, you know, a conflict with the time that she's working, so far as the meeting times. But, I mean, it's going, it's going to be probably hard to get someone, but I guess we're going to have to re-advertise. And I...
Mr. Chairman, if you look on page ninety-four, Mid-Carolina has agreed to accept appointments for any of those positions in the middle because they are aware that we've had such a hard time filling the vacancies of this board. So, they're basically telling us that...
It's opened up from those, along with those two.
Someone from an organized labor. They just want someone bodies there.
Right.
Well, I hear a motion that we instruct the clerk to advertise these positions.
I make the motion.
Motion been made by Commissioner Kelly. Any further discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Vote unanimous. We have on page ninety-six through one oh nine, appointment to the BRAC executive committee. I know Ms. Price has been attending these, these meetings, but she did not have a vote because at that particular time that she started attending, we were a tier two. Now that we are a tier one, we have the right to have a representative, a voting representative on the, on the board. So, what's your pleasure?
Well, Mr. Chairman, right now, Ed Pascal serves as our representative on the, as we were designated earlier. And in conversations with him, he said he's interested in being in that position. But I would also like to add that we designate Lisa as an alternate. And if we give her the authority, she can vote. But I also want to say that any board member that wants to go to any of those meetings is certainly...
Actually, I'm the alternate to Commissioner Pascal.
Yeah.
Right. We just, the board meeting that I attended was kind of, in my opinion, a critical vote, and we did not have anyone there that was eligible to vote. And, you know, it disappointed me, so I don't know how, I mean, if you all work it out, that's fine. We want to keep it the way we have it. It's just I think we just need to make sure if we're not going to be there that we have someone designated that can vote.
You know, it's actually two appointments. Mr. Pascal would be appointed twice, once as the BRAC RTF representative, but this executive committee is a separate appointment. You don't have to appoint Mr. Pascal or Ms. Olive. You can appoint Ms. Shook. It is a separate appointment. So, my point is saying you could have two alternates for the two different appointments.
Got you, got you, got you.
Is that's the way I understood the bylaws.
According to that last paragraph down, it says you must focus with the municipalities and pick out somebody between county and the municipalities to be the representatives of so...
I, I read that also, but my understanding was that pertained only to the BRAC RTF. It doesn't mention that same cogicing when speaking about the executive committee appointment. I, I thought the bylaws are very vague, quite frankly.
Yeah, they all looks like the media.
Yeah, they all look like the media.
Well, I move to appoint Ed as our delegate.
And Mr. Reeves and Ms. Price as alternates.
Yes.
Any other comments? Although in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. So ordered. So, it'd be up to Mr. Pascal if he cannot be there for the meeting, vote, and he can designate the one who is, the two alternates, right. Okay, appointment to Lee County Criminal Justice Partnership at about one ten.
I got a question. Is that automatically, I mean, like, if you can't go, he does, right? Is that the way?
Well, all three of them can go. If they so desire, but he will be the one to be voted. But if he don't go, then he can designate one of them to vote.
He doesn't designate. I just default to me.
Yeah, it defaults, right.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. The one who's there is going to vote, if there's only one. We have one position that needs to be filled on this advisory board. Kevin Bryant was the, our representative on that. Actually, his term expired, no, he was just on-
Nominated Chief David.
Sir?
You weren't. We had nominated guys, Chief David.
I know Ms. Price has discussed this with Sheriff Carter. I don't know if she has anything to add or not. I've not discussed it with her. Not Price, I'm Potts. See your face back there. I don't know if you discussed this with Mr. Carter or not, Brenda.
What we're doing on all the other boards that these owners send in a letter, an official letter to Jeff Johnson asking for a representative for about Deb Board's positions that are, but we didn't ask about this particular one. This one we would set up to have someone in authority that could make a decision in the sheriff's absence.
I would move that we send the sheriff a letter asking for a representative to be appointed to replace Kevin Bryant.
All right. Certain motion that we send a letter to Sheriff Carter for recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, we also have to, I think someone needs to be appointed, stated Mr. Adams. He is the county commissioner that serves on that board.
I was going to tell you, I'll be contacting all of the commissioners for your assignments, and this will be covered then. Although in favor of the motion to send the letter to the sheriff, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Vote unanimous. Managers report, update on sales tax revenue for November two thousand six.
Sales tax report is provided for your review. It does show that we're continuing our two-month trend now, coming in above what we've projected and what we've received in the past. And if you have any specific questions, you can direct those toward Ms. Mentor.
You want to have any questions?
Just one quick one for me, David. What's Article thirty-nine? What's Article forty? Article forty-two?
I will be happy to let Ms. Mentor answer that question.
Article thirty-nine is the one percent sales tax that comes back to the county based on point of distribution. Article forty is a half percent sales tax that is distributed on a per capita basis. They take all the, all of the Article forty that is collected across the state of North Carolina and distribute it back to the counties on a per capita distribution. Article forty-two is an additional half percent sales tax that was levied and is distributed in the same manner. Article forty-four is the most recently enacted half percent that brings us up to two and a half percent for local, and it is distributed back to us, half of the half percent or quarter of the percent is distributed based on per distribution, point of distribution, and the other quarter is based on, should be done on per capita.
And this is somewhere where I can just have it for reference? I mean, because I couldn't even write shorthand for that.
I'm sorry. I'll be glad to get something for you on what the four, what the four different ones are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I got one that's not taxes, but lottery money.
Yes, sir.
Have we got ours yet, or anybody got theirs?
Distribution has been made into the public school fund.
And what amount?
I believe we received it in November, that it was put in in November.
How much?
I have not looked online to see what that is.
Can you do that and have that force by name and be?
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to. See what I can find.
It's projected to be one point four million, I think, but-
That's the total for the year. We only get a portion of that all along deposited into the account, but I'll be glad to get-
Is it quarterly?
I think it's supposed to be quarterly. The first one was, did not come in until November, so I will be glad to go look that up and let you know how much it is.
And before they got that, didn't they have to submit paperwork saying how it was going to be used?
No. Actually, what is happening is the money is being deposited in the public school building capital fund and being, it's segregated from the regular public school money. For you to then get it out of that fund, an application has to be approved by the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, and on that application, you had to specify what you're using it for.
So, it can accrue in there indefinitely, but when we want to make a draw, it is a joint request between us and the Board of Education, we do specify the purpose, which is usually debt service.
And, all right, when we don't agree-
It's going to be, that's going to be a challenge that we're going to be facing before long, I'm afraid.
Is there any rules with that, or?
I have not studied that, and we may have to be looking into that in the future.
There's no going into the phrase of what the rule is.
The conversation thus far has been, and we haven't seen anything contrary, is it will be administered exactly the same as the ADM funds. So, that is, that is the process. Of course, we've never had controversy because we've always specified it for debt service.
Right. We have talked about in the CIP process of possibly taking one source, either the ADM money or the lottery money, and using to do a pay-as-you-go capital financing, since we raised our capital threshold to five hundred thousand instead of a hundred thousand. So, we were hoping to take one of the most secure sources that we felt like and use it for debt service and use the other source for pay-as-you-go. So, that'll be a decision that I'll be facing in this next budget process.
Good, good thinking.
I'll go see if I can find that amount for you.
Do a good job. Just keep the money rolling.
I'm sure I'm good.
All right, Ms. Smidman, item B, recommendation reference, Caremark.
Mr. Haynes and Ms. Stevens and I were asked to come back to the Board with a recommendation and in response to the Board of Health's request that the County of Lee withdraw its support of the Caremark prescription drug program. According to the newspaper, we agreed with that recommendation. That is not the case. We actually think we should not only endorse the Caremark prescription drug card program, but any other cost savings, prescription cost savings we can find. And our job, according to the three of us, is to do that research and then present that information back to the customer, citizen, the client of the Health Department, in a manner they can choose which card is best for them. So, what we're asking today is twofold. Our recommendation, and it's on page one nineteen, is that, one, we request that the Board of Health put together this matrix or menu of available discount plans and explain the pros and cons of each as best they can in some sort of pamphlet, so that anytime our nurse practitioner writes a prescription, they can also get this pamphlet saying, and we have some programs available to help you with the costs. That's our first recommendation. And then the second, I thought was about promotion. Well, it is, is promote this program. Get the word out there that we have this information available, which may mean outside the walls of the Health Department, so that our citizens know what programs are out there. And we're not just talking about card programs. We want to put on this list the Kmart and Walmart generic program, anything we know of this available that can provide savings to our citizens for prescription drugs. So, we're asking the Board, or our recommendation to the Board, is that we send a request to the Board of Health that they produce this information.
All right. I hear a motion that we request that. Any further discussion?
What did you initially say that we were asked to back out? Where did that come from? The Health Board?
The Health Board's request-
Our local Health Board.
That's correct. Was that we not endorse the Caremark plan.
Yeah, let me hear more about it.
Just a slight qualification on that. The Board voted that evening that the Board of Health wanted to withdraw their endorsement of the Caremark card, but that they did not make a recommendation, as I read the motion, that the commissioners could certainly decide to distribute the card, but the Board of Health was withdrawing endorsement of it.
I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Clifford specifically asked us not to participate in that program the day he was here.
Now, I'm not saying what he said, I'm saying what the motion said that evening and is in the minutes.
What was there, the card?
Well, that goes back to Mr. Clifford, who made, as a pharmacist at Medicine Park, that evening in the Board of Health, he made a very convincing argument that there were certainly concerns about the Caremark card itself, maybe the company, and so the Board decided to withdraw their endorsement.
And the Health Board, did the Health Board record any of his concerns for the record, or do you know? And if so, may I get a chance to take a look at what his concerns were?
He gave the whole presentation in front of us. You may not have been here that day.
I don't think that I was, and I was actually asking him about what the Health Board did.
Right. Well, certainly it's in our minutes, it's in tape, his presentation will be on tape with the town, also all of his concerns.
It's a very, for me, it's a very unusual position to find a Health Board going against the card and the Board, our Board, who's not in the health card business, now taking up the issue and moving forward with making recommendations. That's my point and my concern.
Well, I understand.
I'm not addressing you, I'm simply making my point to this Board.
I understand.
All right.
I do understand.
Well, we approved the distribution of these cards. So, I guess if you started not distributing these to people who come in and want them, then this Board would have to vote not to distribute the card anymore. And that's not what I'm understanding your request to do.
That's not our recommendation.
Your recommendation is that we still distribute the card, but we give them other options.
Correct.
Give them information.
So, that could be any pharmacy or anybody that distributes any type of medicine.
National program, local program, retail program, wholesale program, which I think is what the Caremark-
But the Caremark card is still available to anybody who wants it. All right.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting that I at least get an opportunity to read from the minutes what the Health Board decision not to support that card was about. And if the Board chooses to vote today on this recommendation, so may I.
I believe Mr. Clifford also wrote a warrant on to make to the newspapers that was published.
He did.
Explaining his position on it.
I got about eight newspapers in one of my cars that I haven't even had a chance to look at, so.
Well, we, do you want to make a motion to table this and bring it up for the next meeting?
No, sir, I'm fine with what the Board wants to do. I simply want to read why a Health Board takes that position, and then this Board has come back with a recommendation. I think everyone is interested in saving money, but I'm also interested in knowing why the Health Board didn't endorse it. That's a concern to me. And if it's because of Mr. Clifford's concerns, then so be it, but I'd like the opportunity to see that first.
Well, are you interested in my version of it?
No, but thank you.
You're welcome.
We got, we have a motion on the floor that we approved the request that presented by the county manager. Motion made by Ms. Stevens. Any further discussion? Although in favor, say aye. Although opposed, say no.
No.
Six to, or five to two.
Mr. Reeves, Mr. Maughan, and-
I abstain. I don't, I abstain.
In what extent?
You can abstain. You go to majority. Yeah, you go to majority. You abstain to the majority.
Orientation for new commissioners, Ms. Smidman.
First of all, I would like to invite all the Board members, not just the new ones, to attend an orientation on the thirteenth. I believe it is from eight to twelve, eight a.m. to twelve p.m. Ms. Price, Ms. McGeehee, and Ms. Lee have been working to put together an agenda for really Lee County Government One Oh One from the commissioners' perspective. We did a Lee County One Oh One for the sheriff that we learned a lot from, went really, really well, and we hope that this one is just as effective for you folks. But anyone's invited, and we hope that you'll consider coming, but we especially look for Ms. Shook, Mr. Kelly on the thirteenth.
Okay, we don't need to take any action.
No, sir.
I had it on my calendar, but I didn't have the time, so it's eight to twelve.
We're eight, eight to twelve.
Annual, the annual commissioners retreat.
Mr. Brown, we are, last year we were successful, I think a year before also, we used two commissioners from the Board to help staff plan the retreat, and we would request two things today. One, that you decide a date to give us some direction, we can start doing the scheduling, but more importantly, give us two, two of you, if you would appoint two people to help us put together the agenda. One thing that we will be doing at this retreat, since we are a new Board, is revisiting some of the policies of the old Board and make sure we're still moving forward on these policies with respect to financial policies, mission, mission statement and goal statements, those type of things. So, that will be our first part of the session, but we need your help with deciding what the rest of that agenda would look like. So, Mr. Brown, we're asking for two people to help us with that.
Okay, you're asking the Board to appoint two commissioners to work with?
Yes, sir. Last year, I believe it was yourself and Ms. Stevens. And we need a date, which we prefer-
Let's decide on who the two commissioners are and then we'll discuss that. Do I have any volunteers? All right, if we don't have any volunteers-
What do we, this is to plan the-
The retreat.
The retreat.
Agenda for the retreat. And the issues that we want to see.
And one thing that we'll certainly do is give everyone an opportunity for input and probably send that out in the Friday mailing, a list of things, but using those two commissioners, whittle that down to the actual meat of what we do.
All right, I'll be one of them. I was only last year, and I'll do it again. I need somebody else to help. I don't mind helping. I don't mind helping. All right, Mr. Maughan.
So, you got two already?
Yeah.
So, if we have any input, we submit it to one of you guys.
That's right.
And we'll send something out in the mail.
As soon, yeah, after we have our meeting, you'll be in.
I wanted to do that, in fact.
All right. The suggested dates for the retreat are January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and then February twelve and thirteen. Personally, we've got some meetings out of town in January that's going to take us out for about three days.
We prefer the twelfth and thirteenth of February.
Well, and I was going to suggest that-
But we could do the twenty-ninth and thirteenth.
I was going to suggest that we set it for February twelve and thirteen, Monday and Tuesday. Would that be agreeable to all the Board?
I was hoping it would be on the fourteenth, so I could say, how did Valentine?
I was thinking about that. We could stay till after midnight on the thirteenth, probably.
It'd be a long month.
If we have our January meeting on the, did we say the twenty-third or whatever?
Eighth and the twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So, we'll probably have a Board meeting on the- So, we'll probably have a Board meeting on the first week in February, like we would typically do, then have a retreat the next week and a Board meeting the third.
We can decide that next month.
Okay.
The retreat might account for one of our meetings unless we've got something pressing.
So, is this out-of-town retreat, is it a day camp? Where we drive out of town and come back every day?
Well, we'll decide that. The Committee will make a recommendation, we will select a place, or suggest a place for it, and it'll be for your approval. Right, Mr. Smidderman?
Yes, last year we did something at-
Joel Perkins Farm.
Perkins Farm. The year before that, we did it at the Institute of Government in Chapel Hill. So, we've done both.
Both times, yeah, we will. When it was in Chapel Hill, you were driving back to back.
Some people stayed, some people we stayed.
Anybody who wanted to stay. So, that is- By the end of the day up there, you were ready to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that old age stuff is something. Brackup Day, Ms. Price.
At the previous meetings, I have given you a schedule of the BRAC work groups, and those meetings have been rescheduled till after the holidays. However, there are two that are taking place. One of them already has, that was on November 30th, it's the Public Works and Infrastructure Work Group. There were probably about six counties represented, maybe seven, they failed it again because of the holidays, that some did not. And it was a work group session where they did, they listed strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities, just like they did for the Transportation Work Group meeting. And all of those ideas will be sent to the consultants as part of the growth management study that's going to take place. There is a meeting tomorrow scheduled with the Schools and Education Work Groups. Superintendent from the Dinwiddie Public School System in Dinwiddie, Virginia, will be the guest speaker and will lead that work group meeting. One other thing that I would like to mention, there are several issues that have come up concerning the families of the, that will be affected by this relocation, and these issues are being taken to Raleigh. They have been discussed with Lieutenant Governor Perdue, and they are the in-state tuition for the civilian families that are going to be affected. Teacher certifications in North Carolina, as most of the, a lot of the force com spouses are teachers, and with North Carolina having a shortage, the interest is how to speed up that certification for North Carolina. And the State Retirement Fund from Georgia to North Carolina. So, those issues will be talked about more as time moves on, especially after the first of the year, and hopefully there'll be a resolution in helping those families in those areas.
Sure, Lisa, I'd be curious to know on the November 30th meeting, who was there from our county?
Kenny Cole, Larry Thomas, and myself.
Okay, so John Kabasus or Bob Bedwell, they?
No, and since it was Public Works-
That's right.
Yeah, it was Public Works and Infrastructure.
Okay.
The next meeting, the Executive Committee meeting is scheduled for December 14th. Any questions?
We need to, do all, do the two alternates, I'm sure you get all the mailings, Mr. Reeves get all the mailings from concerning BRAC?
No, no.
Mr. Pascal, do you get anything, any mailings from BRAC?
I get most of them.
Okay, we need to make sure that all three of you have the mailings that they're sending out, and I know they are.
Have we had any more tier, two counties moved to tier one since Lee County got on board?
No, sir, we haven't. They have expressed interest.
That was one of the issues that came up the day that we didn't have a voting delegate, and it was to ask, you know, what was the flavor, because there were some counties out there that were wanting to go on up to the tier one. So, that, you know, in that conversation, it was going to be about grant monies and all that kind of thing, and there, to me, there wasn't a good representation of people there that day, but certainly there wasn't anyone from our counties speaking to that. So, I think they tabled it.
They did.
Yeah, they were going to find out what it might cost, what the difference was in the money. So, I imagine that's what's going to come up in that December 14th or 15th meeting.
We haven't received an agenda.
Okay.
Well, I mean, but if they, if they add any more, it simply reduces our-
That is right.
-proportion for matching funds.
The concern was too, that we've received, already received the grant money that did not include those counties. So, there'll be some additional cost.
And the nickel tom.
Right.
Well, I mean, I don't see that being a big issue, still make them accountable for the money that would cost, have they been a tier two at the time, if you bring them on board. But if everybody becomes tier two, then we all, right back where we started.
Right.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, one of the things, the large grant, it's a three-year grant, $5 million for three consecutive years, $15 million. I think the push for that is certainly to keep it contained as a smaller area as possible, because they don't know if they will get it, first of all. So, you know, it waters down the argument that you're going to need it for this area, certainly waters down the disbursement, but it waters down the argument, and knowing that we are going to have people out there pushing that our area gets this, what is called a WIRE grant, what I understand, W-I-R-E. So, anyway, you know, it may hurt that chance, and that chance is what's going to give, provide us with some money, is to do infrastructure, so we can be on the front end of getting ready for this, instead of, you know, just reacting. So, I think we need to be very thoughtful in where we move from here.
Well, for clarity, are you suggesting that the vote be against any more counties moving into tier one?
That is my initial thought, yes, until, yeah, it is. I'm sorry about that.
I'm in a tier one county, I live here, so that doesn't impact me, but I think that what you have to look at is what it might do to those other counties and be concerned with that.
But if there is-
We're going to be players at the table regardless of we're tier one or tier two. We're on 87, we're directly outside the baseline, haunted, is building back towards Lee County, and we're going to be affected either way.
That's right.
But I'm just glad we're on tier-
So, it's the matter of whether we get some assistance in providing infrastructure, and where we want to place that money, if we get any. So, and I think if we are having to present arguments, and this is what's going to happen to these particular counties, you know, and then the counties all of a sudden are 11, you know, I just think the acceptance of that are the, the, what do you call it when they grant a grant? I just think it waters it down, because it's not a clear, it's not a shoe-in that we'll get it. So, and that's the money they're hoping to get.
Okay, I'm not arguing against you, I'm simply saying, let's be mindful that those other counties will have delegation members who will be watching the players at the table. If we come across too strong as being in opposition-
That's right.
-we could hurt our state legislature. So, all I'm suggesting here is, let's see who and what comes about before we take strong positions. I think the other thing is important to me for BRAC especially, is that you, you might have some education members on this BRAC committee, but Lee County governments, both city and county, and the Board of Education better sit down and start talking about seriously what the financial impact's going to be on the growth that's anticipated behind all this, and not count on that grant money that's coming forward, but what we're going to do in the event we get hit.
That's right.
And that's coming.
When are the first families scheduled to relocate? Are the big, first big batch of families?
You're going to have Forces Command Headquarters, it has to be built first, and that'll bring people in as well. So, we're still several years, Forces Command is scheduled in two years to be up and running, so soon after that, families will be transitioning in. But I think it's 2009 and 2010 is the heaviest impact.
I started to say it's going to be after 2008, or that's what they're saying.
So, but the families are already doing their research on school quality and-
Absolutely, and there was a relocation fair held in, I think you were at one of the meetings that I spoke at, held in September, promoting our area, or promoting all of the counties in this area. And there'll be a Schools and Education Relocation Fair held in February, February 7th and 8th, that's still on schedule.
If you look at the force com employees, typically they're older, and so they're saying those type of children are going to be high school students.
And college.
And college, exactly. So, that is just another, that's another thing that makes Lee County very attractive for, people having college students at State and Carolina and all that. Anyway, it's interesting to see how all the dynamics are going to shape this thing. But those are the kind of people that you want to have move into your communities.
They're civilian support personnel.
Because they're going to be replying to you, they're going-
Thank you, please.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to suggest that we appoint Mr. Hall as a parliamentarian, and also that we use the Roberts Rules of Order as our operating procedures. Out of your motion to do that?
It's a motion.
Both been made. On favor, say aye.
Has that been different than the past?
Is that different than this?
Yeah, I mean, Roberts Rules of Order, you need to second everything now.
Are we going back in time?
Well, I thought last year we appointed him on the year of the base.
No.
Okay.
They had their own policies.
Yeah, okay, I withdraw the, withdraw the suggestion. Now, there are two committees, I think, that need to be appointed today, and one is the Finance Committee, and I'd like to appoint Mr. Reeves, Mr. Kelly, and myself to that committee.
What's going to be the Finance?
The Finance Committee, and Mr. Reeves be Chairman of that committee.
Mr. Chair.
We need a vote on that.
I move.
Thank you. You accept that?
Yes, sir.
Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I think it's very important also that our Legislative Committee be reappointed and to keep working, and I'd like to appoint Mr. Smidderman, Ms. Price, Ms. Stevens, and myself to that committee.
What would you approve?
Any discussion? Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It is so ordered. At our January meeting-
Excuse me, one second.
Yes, sir.
Since Commissioner Lamont is going to be our voting delegate, can you use him as an alternate to your committee?
Yes, sir.
I move that he be selected.
That's proper, because he's gone with us about a number of times.
Okay.
Is that agreeable? Okay. You get that, Danick?
Yes, sir.
At our next meeting, and before our next meeting, I'll be getting in contact with each of you concerning the liaison assignments that you will have, and hopefully have those assignments ready to hand out to you at the next meeting. Okay? All right, Commissioners' comments, Mr. Reeves.
Welcome aboard.
Newbies.
Hold on, T.C.
Suckers. Rest deep.
No, that's it, thank you.
All right. I'd just like, I'd just like to welcome both of your Board, I tell you what, there's some hard work ahead. There's some hard work ahead. Mr. Kelly?
I'm glad to be here.
Glad to be here. Mr. Pascal?
I'd like to welcome Jamie and Linda, your Board, they got the work cut out for them.
They should.
I'm just glad to be here, it's kind of dangerous, because I don't know what I don't know yet.
Well, you don't want the crowd.
Exactly.
Change, changes every day.
It sure does. I just would like to say, welcome aboard as well, and I'm excited that you all are going ahead and signing up for the new Commissioner of School, because it is going to be the best thing that you ever did for yourself. But also, on a side note-
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Did I give grades in that?
I hope they don't flunk that.
Right. I think I'm going to go and listen to it again as well. But also on a side note, I don't know if you all understood or heard today that the clerk over in the town of Broadway, Jenny Lynn Bales, who is just a little native Broadwayed, we call them Broadwidians, but anyway, she passed away last night, and she is, you know, I call her a young woman, because she's got children younger than I do, but anyway, so everyone is very, very sad in town of Broadway, and so just remember her family, and Bob Stevens, and everybody else that has kind of known her all her life. In your prayers, please.
Ms. Zicker was, this-
She just has some-
So, don't say it.
Yeah, she just has some issues with her heart, has always carried a lot of stress, but just evidently, those people are, it's terrible.
All right.
I do have one comment. I realized very quickly who's the hard worker on this Board, and who makes it click, and that's Gail. And I just want to say, I appreciate her efforts already, and I can't imagine, you know, so, good job.
And you're, you're in the seat that you're packing, don't you?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Smidderman, do you have any further comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
All right. We are now going to have a-
I'm sure.
All right, okay. You were hiding behind there, I couldn't see.
I'm sorry. The distribution we received, which was actually in October, was $315,267. That's out of a total of $38 million that was distributed.
315, 2?
315, 267.
What had we projected?
We've projected, based on the state, an excess of 1.4 million to be received this year, for the first year.
Is this a quarterly distribution, or what?
This was the first distribution. I'd have to go back and look and see if it was for a full quarter.
Did you say 1.4?
1.4 was the total estimate based on the state's projections provided to us through the Association. And for the first distribution, it was 315,000.
They haven't given a distribution schedule yet.
Not a final one that I have seen. I will do some research on it and see what I can find out, and also look into the application process. I did see that online where the application is, I'll go see what other notes there are on there as to if there is a disagreement between the two Boards as to how it will be used and stuff, I'll do some research on this before the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's 315,000 more dollars than we had. Mr. Cole?
It's heading to about 250 last night.
Hope to get that. Mr. Cole, you got up, you got something to say?
No, I was just up.
I hope you're going to buy a lottery ticket. That money is not what it was all-
Not what it's cracked up to be.
Well, I think one of our legislative goals at the state level needs to be how it's reassigned. I'm not in favor of more money going to reduce class sizes and pre-K programs than it is for school construction needs, because that's not the biggest need right now, so, you know, there's no data to support that the pre-K, it sounds good, but there's no data to support that that's, we're getting any return on our dollars there. It's the four through eight that we're falling behind on, and I've met with Linda Smith, and you know, shared with her some HOTS programs, which are for Title I schools, so, you know, I have a real desire to see our education system improve here, but I think that, you know, I'm not happy with the way the lottery proceeds are being distributed.
Well, I think we need to stay on top of it. All right, per North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, 8, and 6, we will go into closed session. Do I hear a motion that we go into closed session?
So, move.
Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Justin, we will not be taking a vote after this closed session, and there won't be any items that will-
Take a quick break?
Yes, sir.
Please do.
We'll meet in the small conference room at 20 minutes after.